I think it's seven o'clock. There is one user on here calling user two. I think, who is that? Is there a call on the line? I'm trying to count for every school board member.
Sanford, it may be me, I'm on my AirPods.
Okay, cool, yeah, we just wanted to make sure because the only people with the link were people in the cabinet and our school board members, so we're just trying to discern who it was. That's cool. Thank you very much. Well, again, it's seven o'clock, it's good to see you all. I call from the order, and before we get started with the moment of silence, I will read what I seem to be reading every time we meet now. The school board of the City of Manassas is meeting in a special meeting, a budget work session, a virtual meeting is authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708. Dot two A three due to restrictions on public gatherings issued by the state and federal government. And with that, we're going to start with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Now for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We'll move on, next item on the agenda is roll call, Ms. Garza, maybe the roll call, please.
Jeremy Williams.
Here.
Ms. Jeremy Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Williams.
Alba, she says she's trying.
She just texted me, she's trying to get on.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Garza, would you mind, thank you for reading that, I appreciate the roll call, would you mind emailing Mrs. Williams the link?
Yes.
I was gonna try to do it, oh, she just texted you. So hopefully, Mrs. Williams will be able to join shortly. And while she's joining, we can move on to start with the discussion agenda. First item on the discussion agenda is personnel, revise hourly temporary substitute additional assignment rates FY twenty 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 one. And it's Mr. Hawkins, so Mr. Hawkins, the floor is yours.
All right, well, good evening. During the budget process, and when the governor proposed it and was adopted by the General Assembly, they changed the minimum wage of hourly workers to nine dollars and a half. It's that time, such that at that time, the governor has reversed his position, and it's been approved by the General Assembly that the minimum wage will not go up to nine dollars and fifty cents until at least next May. What we're doing, we follow the governor's lead, and having a nine dollars and a half minimum wage, you can see on your, on the screen, the items marked in yellow. What we're doing is reverting back to the company wage of weeks that we had prior to the governor's action. It affects two or three, it looks like maybe five different positions. So we're just reverting back to where we were prior to the governor's action. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments about that?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Albrecht.
But Mr. Hawkins, if I understand this, will that require the board next year in May to take an action when the governor's raise goes into effect? Or are we assuming that, you know, the school year is over by the end of May, therefore, this is a twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget issue? Or how does the future implication of the actions of the governor and General Assembly impact this?
I think we will, I think our calendar from now on will be, school will be dismissed, or the end of the school year will be at the end of May. So I don't anticipate this being an issue for the school board for the FY twenty one fiscal year. We will, I'm assuming that the governor will, this is, this will change in May of next year, and we'll put it on the twenty twenty two agenda for approval by the school board for the budget next year.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Andy, if we're going to revert this back, I mean, I'm looking at eight dollars an hour as opposed to nine fifty, or nine dollars an hour opposed to nine fifty. Had we adjusted in the current, in the budget we are working on now? And if so, what is the cost? And why don't we step and go ahead and do what we were going to do if we had already implemented on the budget that we are in the twenty one budget?
Well, you know, the truth is that these, we, we very rarely pay anyone in these areas anyway. This is just an all inclusive list. Probably during this school year, prior school years, we haven't spent a thousand dollars in these areas to begin with throughout, in actual cost. We very seldom use these types of positions anyway. So we, I don't think we've really changed the budget, but it's not going to have a direct impact on anybody within the school division down anywhere. The only one that we, the only one that we, that we do have some expenditures on is the digital learning support assistant. And I think what happens with that is that every summer, you know, the technology department brings people in to work on reconfiguring the devices and things like that. But it has been a nominal amount of money that we have spent on it over, over the years. So to answer your question, Mr. Di Maria, it's not going to make a lot of difference to us financially, one way or the other, whether or not we go to, we stay at nine fifty, or whether we revert back to this. We were just trying to follow the lead of the governor.
I, I, I like our governor, and I, but I think we know better. I, I would, I would, my opinion is we don't revert back, we leave it at nine fifty. Nine fifty is low enough, is low enough as it is, for no matter what you're doing, if you're getting nine fifty an hour, you know, it's not a whole lot of money, and if it's not a whole lot of money to us, if we don't use these positions, and we have to make an action or revert back, I think we just leave it the way it was. And I'll, I'll leave it at that in case anybody else wants to comment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Di Maria, leaving it at the nine fifty, does that give anyone any heartburn? Mr. Albrecht?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's heartburn, I just, how can I put this politely, we're having a special meeting to talk about budget because we have a $2.6 million problem, and I realize this is grains of sand on the huge Sahara Desert, but it's indicative of really the, the, the situation we're in. We can't be everything to everybody, and I realize we'd like to lead by example, there's lots of things we'd like to do. We've got to focus on what we have to do.
If these were big numbers, I'd agree with Scott a whole lot, but these are our most challenging, you know, and, and the, the chairman asked, has anybody's got anything to say, and here comes Scotty. The, these people, fifty cents an hour, and to this budget is minimal, if not nothing. From what Andy said, most of these positions aren't even used most of the time. And when they are used, it might cost us a few dollars and make a big difference in somebody's life that is making nine dollars as opposed to nine fifty. I, I just think that we've, the way it was, I see no reason to go backwards. If it was, if it was large amounts of money, it might be a different story. But these minuscule amounts of money for us may make a big difference in these folks' lives, so I feel like we ought to just leave it alone and not mess with it.
Any other comments?
So it, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Kiefer.
So, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed it, but Andy, did you say what the implication of, of kind of, you know, the last two years of these types of positions, what the budget impact was? Did I miss that?
It's a very small amount, Mrs. Kiefer, it's not going to make a difference one way or the other with the, with the school division. We very rarely use these positions, the only ones that we have consistently used every summer would be the digital learning support assistant. Plus, we bring those laptops back in from the students every summer, and they're cleaned up, they are assessed for damage, their, their software is reconfigured, and they're reset for the following year. So probably has those people in probably, you know, four weeks in the summertime to get all of the thousands of devices that we have back in line so they'll be ready to be used the following school year. But we, we don't.
So, so was there, was there sort of the amount, like the average amount with that cost, just for the record, like minuscule?
Yeah, average amount would be between, probably between five and ten thousand dollars would be the cost. So it's not going to make a, any, any significant difference to the school board if we were to leave it at nine fifty an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, if no one has any objections, I think that we should just leave it at nine fifty. The minuscule amount, taking into account Mr. Albrecht makes a very good point, and I was thinking, if it was, you know, like fifty cents for each of these different assignments, then it may be a little bit different. But since it's so, so small, and especially given the pandemic and those who are suffering, people looking, if anyone ever looked at it, I don't think that they would say, oh, you're giving folks in Northern Virginia nine fifty instead of nine dollars, you're being irresponsible. But I think people understand that, even given our financial condition at the moment. But I do think you're right, we need to be sensitive about the things we're doing financially, but I think that this amount is so miniscule, it probably won't, you know, push anyone's buttons, so to speak. Mr. Hawkins?
Okay, so we'll delete this item from the next agenda, you know, the next school board. All right, so the next item on the agenda is school board adopted budget update.
Mr. Hawkins, before you get started, I just wanted to give a brief overview of our thought process as we went through the changes to account for the $2,667,486 shortfall when you add in the city and state funds that are on hold until they can get a better picture of of their budgets going forward. We started off with three options, we quickly deleted one of them. The options that we will present today almost mirror each other, except for the final $208,655. The option that we will present tonight, those funds will come from the supplies and services line of the budget. The other option was taking it out of fund balance, and when I look at fund balance, I think about it as the rainy day fund. And as I told Andy, I said, Andy, it's storming outside, and so I, I don't think that's an option that we should take off the table. So we don't, we have that slide at the end of the presentation, but we are presenting the first option. But if the board would like to debate the other option, you know, we will listen to what you have to say and follow your lead. Both options will rely on, will require the board to approve the textbook adoption at the meeting on the nineteenth. But again, they, the, the two options basically mirror each other. I'll turn it over to Andy, and he can go over the, the details of how we got to the numbers.
Okay, so during, during our last school board project work session, this chart was shown to you concerning the projected financial challenges facing MTPS during the next fiscal year. On, you know, on May eleventh, the city council adopted with their, the deferral of a million dollars, and we have a projected state revenue deferral of one point, well over one point six million dollars. The above revenues deferrals do not include any potential revenue losses through sales tax lottery proceeds or ADM. So, this chart, back to Mr. Superintendent's recommendation of how MTPS should address the projected shortfall. First, the school board, when it adopted its FY twenty one operating budget, set aside an additional $100,000 contingency reserve as an added safeguard to address unknown division revenue fluctuation. We are proposing that we dedicate these funds for its intended purpose at this time. Second, superintendent is recommending that we are proposing that the school board place the following five positions on hold until such time as deferred revenue from the city and the state is released to the school board. The city manager stated that once the economy is restarted and the city starts meeting revenue projections, the funds will be released to the school board. The governor also has promised to call the General Assembly back into session this fall to receive additional informational tax revenue, and if appropriate, release the deferred revenue to the local. Third, we are recommending that the school board approve the purchase of textbooks and computer technology equipment included in the FY twenty one adopted budget in FY twenty. The school division's transition to primarily a virtual environment since March thirteenth, MTPS has expenditure savings in areas such as utilities, bus fuel, such as teachers, early staff, materials and supplies, etc. By allowing these FY twenty one budget expenditures in FY twenty, this will allow one time, one time expenditures to be purchased, and also address the financial needs of the school division in FY twenty one. And finally, we are recommending a reduction in the school's FY twenty one allocation for educational supplies and services. This reduction results in a division-wide decrease of 1.2%, and will be reinstated if or when the resources are restored by the city and the state. We're hopeful that this reduction will be temporary in nature, and, and this will be our first priority if and when our resources are restored. Okay, so there are, there are some who, who say that the school board has been allocated approximately a million dollars in care act funding. Why isn't this funding being used to offset city revenue deferral? It's stated earlier, the school board faces uncertain financial capabilities going forward, and we don't know at this time what our school division will look like this fall, and what additional non-traditional costs may be required. For example, the school board could be required to provide masks for all students and staff, which would equate to 200,000 masks per month. And that's if we limit them to one mask per day. This would cost approximately $128,000 a month, or almost 1.3 million dollars annually. And we also have a certain number of families in our district who do not have access to adequate reliable life ride so that we can provide quality instruction virtually. For every thousand hot spot purchased, it would cost the division approximately $250,000 annually. We don't know at this time if we will be required to show students at staggered times from school to school. If so, our cost for school bus fuel, the driver's salary will increase substantially. Technology needs are also unknown, how many devices will we need to be added, replaced or repaired due to damage, or what resources will be needed to provide quality instruction to our students while also adequately supporting our future and providing adequate professional development. While the school division, will the school division be required to provide enhanced cleaning in school? If so, will additional staff be required, what additional cleaning supplies may be needed? The above are just a few of the challenges facing MTPS in FY twenty one. While a million dollars sounds like a lot of money in care act funding, meeting the needs in our student, of our students and staff will quickly be in excess of the appropriated fund. So with that, I will turn it back over to the chair, and hopefully we'll be able to address any questions, concerns, or comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins, I appreciate your presentation and pulling it together so quickly. I know this is a challenge, it's a challenging time for all of us, but especially for you all, so thank you. And I see Mrs. Miller in room as well, so thank you both for your work, and your staff will help with this. Are there any comments from board members? Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, I kind of want to, I guess paraphrase to make sure I understand it, you know, use those good participative listening skills. Ms. Garza, could you go to slide three, because I don't think I wrote all the numbers down as Andy was talking. So I think what I heard, and looking at this, we need to reduce the current budget by that 2.667 million dollar number. And because we have, what I think I heard is one-time savings in the current year's budget, and I would assume that's because we're not paying substitutes, we're not operating buses, maybe we're seeing some utility savings, I don't know. That's what then is allowing that one-time savings for what traditionally is considered a one-time purchase, which are textbooks. And by the way, buying the textbooks in the computers early really makes sense as opposed to waiting to one July, given how early in the year we're now starting. And that accounts for about 1.8, 1.9 of that 2.7 million dollars.
That's correct, and that's a win-win situation for both of us at all. It helps us now for items that we desperately need as far as textbooks. The textbook adoptions will be coming forward for approval, I think, on the nineteenth, and it's English textbooks. And, and, but we need to have, we need to have these textbooks and, and technology in available. Technology especially has a lead time, and, you know, everybody, every school division in the state or nation probably is out scrambling for our computer devices so that we be able to deliver instruction virtually. And so we need to have the lead time available. If we wait until FY twenty one, the devices will not, if they're available, would not be able to be delivered by, in time for the start of this school year. We need to buy them early, and it will help us, this, this will also help us in FY twenty one.
Okay, so then the second piece I look at is about $630,000 worth of deferrals, meaning if the city were to restore the million dollars, we'd be able to then take the five positions which are outlined on this page, and also the student-based educational supplies and services, and restore those to the budget. But for right now, they're essentially out. Am I interpreting that one correctly?
Yes, you are, that's, that's correct.
Okay, and then, then the, the third pillar, I guess, of getting to this necessary reduction is reducing our use of contingency reserve in next year's budget. In other words, if stuff were to happen, we have less flexibility in the budget.
Yes, that's, that's true.
So, and that's probably the piece that ought to be most worrisome, given, we just talked about the million dollars in CARE Act, and if you think about where schools are going to be next year, and I just was actually asked to review a thing for Dr. Capazudo, who's president of the UK, University of Kentucky, they're looking at four options for what to do next, and essentially, actually, they looked at sixteen, and we distilled them down to four. Start everything like it's normal, no one really believes that's going to happen. Have a delayed start, have some kind of hybrid-based semester, or go to full online education for the, for the first half of the year. And really, we're faced with that same dilemma, and each one of those scenarios probably comes with costs to us that we don't know what they are. Whether it's student access, truly that they can get it, as you mentioned, the number of devices we need. If we have to do some kind of social distancing with school buses, and they can only hold half as many or a quarter as many kids, holy cow, what, who knows what we, how we do that? You know, we have to buy buses, buy bus drivers, good golly. You know, masks, as you said, would spend well over a million dollars right there, and we haven't talked about how many times a week, or is it daily, that we have to deep clean every building? I just heard a thing on Metro today, they've used 100,000 gallons of disinfectant in the past month. And I wouldn't even want to think what that costs, plus the labor, so.
I mean, the cost alone, if we were to provide hand sanitizer at the school, you know, alone would be a significant amount of money. I mean, you know, I think, it surprises me the most is the uncertainty of where we will be as the school starts. But what if, what if we go back to school, and then in October, November, it plays up again, and we are effectively shut down again virtually? You know, what do we do then? We've got to have a plan to be able, within 24 hours, to be able to continue on the quality of instruction for our students.
So with that, I think I, my rhetorical question to the board, or my question to the board from my perspective is, should we look for one or two other positions, but given how many we added, or the ones we added back in March, when we thought funding was a little better than it is now, or a lot better than it is now? Should we look at one or two more of those, and to have the contingency? Or is it the will of the board, as we talk about this, that if the kind of things we're thinking about happen, that's when you really got to dip into that, as Andy called it, the rainy day fund, and go appropriate money out of our current reserve?
Thanks, Mr. Albrecht, comments, responses?
I have a question, I have a question for Andy. You have, I think it's on slide two. One of the unknowns in funding is that it doesn't include losses in sales tax, lottery proceeds, and ADM. What kind of difference will those changes make? Because I have heard that lottery proceeds are way down, proceeds from sales tax, revenue losses through sales tax. How much will those differences impact our budget? What is the likelihood or the potential?
We don't know yet, and we won't know until around August. The, the sales tax revenues have at least a two-month delay in getting to them. We just received many sales tax, so that was for March. March is when we first started getting into the pandemic. We had no loss in sales tax during the month of March, we were pretty comparable to where we were for previous months. But we're expecting a different sales tax revenue in April, May, and June. Yeah, so I don't have, I don't know how much that will be, and that's one of the reasons why the state is waiting until, and the, and the governor is going to reconvene the General Assembly this fall, once they have better projections. Now, that being said, there are, I've, I've heard a lot about a renewed, another COVID relief made by the federal government to provide additional funding to localities to help offset these costs when they, when they come forward. And, you know, there is, there's at least two rainy day funds that the, that the General Assembly has, and they may come back and make school divisions whole until we can properly budget for, you know, any reductions in our revenue stream going forward. So I don't know right now, I can't give you an estimate about how much sales tax we make, nobody knows that. Lottery proceeds in the, in the month of April, I think that's what it was, about 18%. But, you know, if you have a big jackpot, we have a lot of people behind them, and we go back. So, you know, these funding mechanisms are very terrible. You know, when the lottery was put in, it was one of the big guns. So one of the things that was spoken against giving them a lottery revenue is that was not a stable revenue source.
Right.
Has been for the last 10 years. Has been for the last ten years and has been great. But the, this, this situation that we're in now highlights how, how, uh, bearable they can be. I don't know yet, but we'll be coming back to the school board once the numbers are known and, um, we will get relief from, uh, additional, uh, money from the federal government. And, you know, I think there's another package that's coming through. Hopefully they'll be, the Congress will work out their differences and have additional funding for, uh, state governments and local.
And real quick, did you say that masks for students, for if we gave every student a mask per day, it would cost us around a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a month?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's tough.
All right. Thank you. Um, I think Mr. Di Maria has a comment.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I disagreed with, uh, Mr. Albrecht on the hourly rate, but everything else he said the second time, I agree with wholeheartedly. Um, as per usual, I have to say, we have to plan for everything and we have to plan for everything in pencil. Because we can make all these plans and everything set up and then we have to erase it because something else happens that we can't and nobody else can foresee. So, um, all of the things that Mr. Albrecht said is a, uh, necessity. Um, I talked about, uh, you know, buses, are we going to have to do full buses? Uh, Mr. Albrecht, that, this might be a time, you know, to, uh, go back to bigger walk zones. We, we can bring that up again after five or 10 years. Every, give that a whirl. Uh, Andy, I don't know if you addressed this, one of the positions that are on hold is nurse at O H S. I'm going to assume this is a, an additional nurse. And I'm going to assume that, um, the state mandate of number of nurses per students would still be met without this position. Is that true, sir?
That's correct. We already have two nurses at Osborne. This would be a third.
Thank you. I, I figured you had that under control. I just wanted to make sure. Um, and that's all I've got for right now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, and just to make sure everyone gets to talk, I think I'll just go around the horn, so to speak. Um, Ms. Kepfer, do you have any other comments?
Ms. Williams?
Yes, um, I, I really, truly what Mr. Albrecht and Mr. Di Maria just said, I like the terminology, really, we need to pencil this in because it's going to change my, my, I anticipate that we are going to be coming back to the table many, many times and, um, my, I, I personally don't feel comfortable, um, going into the fund balance. I think we're going to need that. Um, hopefully we will not, but I just anticipate to be, this isn't the, this isn't the last conversation we're going to have. Um, so I think we need to be very, very prudent as to what, what route we take. Um, so I just wanted to make that comment of my concerns and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, Ms. Seberg?
No further comment. Um, wait and see. After, thank you.
Good. Thank you. So, um, um, after the presentation, it seems to me that right now, based on what Mr. Hawkins presented, um, the only, I guess, question would be whether that one hundred thousand dollars we have taken or appropriated from contingency reserve, we should leave it there or we should find another way to try to make up that one hundred K. Um, is that correct? My assessment correct? Board members, are there any suggestions about addressing the one hundred K other than contingency reserve?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I, I go back to the positions we added at the March official budget meeting. I believe the ones we have already here as deferred are most likely from that list. Are there any others on there that, you know, last in ought to be first out? And I realize each of these are needed positions. I don't think any of us are arguing the merit. I think really we're looking at the difficult decisions we're being faced with.
Is there a way, uh, sir, to pull up that list? Or is it something we could do in a, a future state? I actually, uh, would agree with Mr. Albrecht on that.
Okay. I think Mrs. Miller may have gone to get a list.
That's what she did.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, getting back to Mrs. Stevens' question, because it was really a great one. I have a number in my head, but I'm not going to open my mouth and stick my foot in it until Andy talks. Andy, about what's our annual revenue between lottery and sales tax?
Sales tax is, uh, almost nine million dollars. I think it's eight point eight million. And lottery proceeds would probably be, uh, another, uh, another 10 million.
So having a million-dollar impact is not unreasonable, and that's a lot more than I thought.
That was my concern, Mr. Albrecht, is the impact.
Okay, so some of the positions that we have available, um, that's what you want to do. Would be, um, workforce development, uh, person at Osborne, a teacher at Williams. Counselor at Osborne. It would be, and maybe, I, I think maybe the one to have graduation, uh, person at Osborne. Those are the types of positions that we're, that we're referring to.
Okay. Um, I have a suggestion. Um, board members, you can weigh in after I speak. Hopefully it won't sound off-base. Since we are asking them to change their projections, um, what they would like to do with the contingency reserve, we're asking them to make, you know, cuts in a sense. Uh, hopefully temporary, but cuts nevertheless, um, from what we planned on having. How about we go, we, um, give them the direction that they go back? And in those positions that Mr. Albrecht mentioned articulated and Mr. Hawkins was just talking about, we have them find one hundred K worth of positions to remove that would match up with a hundred K for the contingency reserve. Instead of us telling them, you know, take the Williams teacher out or take the workforce development person out, they can assess their needs. You know, they're all, they're all urgent. So all these needs are urgent. We know that. We, we, we need them. But of these urgent needs, which ones are the least urgent, so to speak? And let us know which one hundred K they can cut, um, and then come back to us with that, as opposed to us trying to, you know, discern which ones are the ones that, uh, should be cut. Does that make sense to folks?
Makes a lot of sense. Staff thought to make the recommendation.
All right. Mr. Hawkins, is that, um, and Dr. Newman, um, can you all work with that?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. And I, looking at it, it's, I mean, that gives me heartburn. Any, I mean, not having anything that we proposed, because we already know from the beginning that the budget that we really need, you know, we don't, we don't meet. So that's before the pandemic. Um, so it's, these are difficult decisions in difficult times, but, um, I just think we just need to look at what we can look at and, uh, do what we can, you know, cut back for the moment and hopefully all these things won't, won't come to pass and we'll get all the money we need and go forward.
Is there any other comment or input from board members on the budget, Mr. Hawkins' presentation?
Um, I have one tied to Mr. Hawkins' comments during the presentation. I, I think I've heard everyone in agreement with accelerating the purchase of textbooks and computers. And I heard Mr. Hawkins say we had to take that action next week at our, at our meeting. And I don't know when staff would be ready for the next one, but it seems to be these two actions are somewhat independent of each other. And do we need to make the recommendation or approve tonight the acceleration of those two items so that staff can have it on next week's, um, agenda? How are we proceeding with that?
Okay, so the, the textbook adoption will be on the, for the next, uh, school board agenda. It would be on the nineteen school board agenda. At that time, we will be asking the school board to waive second reading so that we can proceed with the textbook adoption, uh, purchase right away. As far as the, uh, technology is concerned, I spoke to, uh, Bobby today, we are planning to, uh, initiate purchase orders right away for those, that technology equipment. With all of these, with both of these purchases, if they, if the, um, materials are not received by June the thirtieth, then we will have to carry over the money when we have the year-end report for FY twenty, carry them over to FY twenty-one, uh, to pay these requests. I'm anticipating that the textbooks will not be here by June the thirtieth, but I am anticipating that a majority of the, uh, computer equipment will be here prior to June the thirtieth, but it may be a portion of that order that will not be here. But we, uh, so I'm just saying that we're going to write, we want to write the purchase orders now. We're trying to get as much as we can in before June the thirtieth. Whatever the difference is in that, we will ask the school board at the year-end report for FY twenty to bring money over from FY twenty to FY twenty-one to pay for these, uh, these enclosures.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're really clear about it.
Great point, Mr. Albrecht, and thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Any other comments or, or input? Um, Dr. Newman, anything you want to add before we move on to the next item on the agenda?
I just want to thank staff for, um, coming together and, and putting, uh, forth this plan and we'll go back. Uh, we'll revisit the list and, and see what we can do. While still giving our, our students the best education that, that we can provide.
Great point. Thank you, Dr. Newman. And, um, I noticed, uh, Mr. Barrett, um, Ms. Garza, Ms. Wingfield, uh, Dr. Saunders, um, also on the call. So thank you all for your work and your helping and participating. I appreciate it. I appreciate your time. And the next item on the agenda, um, is board member comments. Um, so we will start off and I'll mix it around a little bit tonight. I'll start off with Mrs. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I very much appreciate that our board is continuing to meet and stay informed and move forward as much as we possibly can during this pandemic. Initially, I like to educate myself with the help of professionals and experts in our field. Um, like many, I'm listening to the COVID updates by our governor and by, um, public health leaders. I try and learn from others and their experiences. And recently, there's been a lot of online opportunities for school board members, um, not just through V S B A, but other groups as well. And this included, um, a webinar I attended with, uh, attended with Dr. Janice Underwood. She's the Department of Education's Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And also webinar on leadership through crisis. Both of those were offered, offered through, through V S B A. And I also like to learn about the work that our teachers do, um, so I can make decisions that help support them and the students in the classroom, uh, whether it's traditionally or during a pandemic. This week, Mrs. Williams and I, we reviewed a proposal for our K-12, um, language arts resources, as has been mentioned tonight. And this is something that our teachers are very excited about. So, uh, the board can look forward to that at our next meeting. And I just wanted to say, take care of yourselves and the children. I'll see you soon.
Very well put, Mrs. Seberg, and thank you. And thank you for mentioning some of the things that you listen to, because folks don't always know what school board members are doing behind the scenes, so to speak. And anytime we can inform ourselves to help our constituents and our students, it's, it's great for everybody. So thank you for doing that as well. Um, next, uh, Mr. Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. Um, what Ms. Seberg said, uh, and, uh, thank you to everybody for all the work you're doing. Um, I'm going to get through this here. Uh, one of our, um, part of the fabric of Manassas City Public Schools is Jeff App. Everybody, if not, uh, most everybody, if not everybody listening, knows Jeff. Um, on, uh, he has given me permission to tell you all this. On Monday, his bride Lisa had a, uh, double bypass at U V A. She is progressing well and should be moved from ICU to the step-down unit today or tomorrow. Um, that's got to be so difficult for that to happen, especially in a time like this where Jeff couldn't be with her. And adding insult to injury, on Tuesday, Lisa lost her father. So, um, th- th- this would be difficult for, for anybody, um, for us to hear it about anybody. But Jeff and his family, uh, Lisa and Spencer are in the, the fabric that holds Manassas City together. Um, very, very special people. And, uh, this is very, um, painful, what they're going through and what they're going through now with everything added on top of it. Um, Lisa's a strong lady. She'll be fine, but this is a big deal and for her to have a heart problem and then a heartache the following day, it's, it's just almost too much to take and she's in there alone. So if you pray, pray for the apps, um, send them good thoughts. Um, ju- just keep them, keep them in mind, um, on your daily about and realize how good we've got it. Um, people like Jeff are going through a real hard time right now. So, so pray for the apps and, and send your good thoughts. Um, and, uh, that's coming from all of Manassas City. Jeff, I doubt Jeff is watching our board meeting, but, um, the city, this, the school system especially loves you unconditionally and, and we're in complete support of you. If you ever need anything, don't hesitate. All I told him, I'd come down and mow his grass if we needed to. It's why I didn't miss, but, um, he would never take you up on that. Um, and that's all I've got. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mary. I very well put up Mr. App. We, we love them and his wife very much and his family. So thank you for letting us know. Appreciate that. Um, next, uh, Ms. Stevens.
I just want to echo what everyone else has said. Um, thank you to our M C P S school staff for, and central office for doing this work during such a hard, challenging time and the decisions we have to make. Um, and I really echo what Mr. Di Maria said earlier, that we need to do this budget in pencil because we are going to have to go back and make changes and meet again and revisit the budget again. Um, but really, everyone just stay safe, take care of your family, and think about them first.
Very well put. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Appreciate that. Um, next, uh, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first, I want to apologize for getting on a little late. I, I was trying to get on and it just kept saying it won't let you in until the meeting starts. I, so I, I don't know if that's a public leak. I was trying to get on. I'm not sure, but I want to apologize for that. Um, I, I also just wanted to, um, talk real quick, speak to the language arts textbooks that, um, Mrs. Se, Mrs. Seberg and I, um, had the opportunity to sit in on that meeting. And it, 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 it's, it's a lot of, And it, 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 it's, it's a lot of, in the, in this crisis we're in, it seems like a lot of money at this point in time to expend on these, on these textbooks. But on the other hand, I just want to comment and make sure everybody understands that what a great opportunity we have, we have the funds to do it. And it's really going to really, the, the online aspect and piece to, to this, these new, we call them textbooks. There's a lot more online opportunities there. And as we go into our next school year, knowing what we're going to do and what we're going to have to do, I think it's really, really important that we're, we'll be ahead of the game and already have that online opportunity for the kids. So I just wanted to make that comment. And I also wanted to say that this has been so challenging. It's been challenging for everybody, and staff has done an amazing job so far to date. And I anticipate that these challenges are going to get even more, and we're going to be treading waters that we've never treaded before. So let's all hang in there and keep the communications open, and we're going to get through this together, I know. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Great comments. Next, Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you. I think everybody has said things very eloquently. You know, I feel for Mr. App. I know he had another loss even before this in the last couple of weeks, and just can't even imagine what it's like. Many of us have experienced loss during this time, and it's a different kind of loss. And it's one you cannot prepare for or even grieve over yet. So I just send my prayers to his family and others who've experienced loss during this time. And it just reminds me that every day when, you know, you, you go and let your, your dog out or take him for a walk, all of a sudden you can hear the chirping of the birds. All of a sudden, you appreciate the clouds in the sky. You have a whole different perspective on what life is really about and how much you, you take it for granted until you're forced into being stuck in a place where you can't get out basically right now. So I just want to extend our deepest sympathies and prayers to the App family. They are the epitome of what Manassas City families are. And he is the epitome of a Manassas City Public School employee. So our heart breaks for them. I also just want to say that, you know, during this time, and I know there's still conversations going on about, you know, reentry and all of that. And I just want to not lose sight of the fact of the mental health and emotional impact this is having on folks. I know Mr. Williams talks about it a lot based on Dr. Williams' experiences. But if you even just look around in the people who are in your life and how it's impacting them right now in ways that you probably can't even imagine, a conversation or just a quick check-in with people makes a big difference. You don't know what's behind how people are feeling. You don't know how difficult this is for folks. You know, all of us are being asked to work and, and run our families in different ways, and it's having a significant impact on everybody. So as we think about what we're championing, as we get back to whatever the new normal looks like, let's never lose sight of mental health. I mean, they're, you know, preparing for all the physical things and the masks and the ventilation and the social distancing. But at the end of the day, if people aren't whole, that, none of it matters at the end of the day. So I just want to make sure we take care of our kids in that way, and I know this board is committed to that. And lastly, I say it every time we get together to meet, and I really am sick of seeing your faces on the screen and just want to hug y'all. Please support your local businesses. When we talk about the sales taxes and the other things coming into this city, if you, if you can find it in you to just eat out at least once a week or do something, please support these local businesses. They are trying so hard to do the right thing. I saw today that some of them are even batting together to try to give meals out to first responders. That's the way they're thinking. That is Manassas. They're, they're thinking beyond themselves. They're thinking about their community and the people in it. And so I adore and love each and every one of them and want to make sure that we continue to support them. So thank you, and I ask you all to stay safe and know that we love you and we love you all in Manassas. So take care of everybody.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kiefer. Great, great points. And I'm going to go out of order, so I don't have any comments tonight. So I will leave the last comment to Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me thank, start off, thanks staff. The meeting we just went through was incredibly difficult. And should anybody be watching on Facebook or Google this later, the financial acumen this board and our staff have is unparalleled. The decision-making, the financial rigor, and just the leadership Dr. Newman and staff have, we are in great hands to weather the storm that we're all in. And I can say that because I've been at this for 20 years, five terms. And the storm we're in has made me also think about a lot of things. And for that reason, I've decided not to run for a sixth term. And I'm putting that out now because there's still about four weeks left before the filing deadline. So that anybody in the community who would like to make a decision can. Trust me, I will stay active in the, the community. I'm not moving anywhere. I'm not going anywhere. But I think the time's right for new people to come in and really take us to the next level and keep the greatness we have started going. So I want to thank this board, previous boards. It has been an honor, a privilege, and you have me 110% of the 31st of December. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I'll give you the last word, Mr. Albrecht. The last item on the agenda is adjournment. So may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board and city of Manassas adjourn.
Same.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Di Maria, that we adjourn. We need a roll call vote, since this is a virtual meeting, so Mrs. Garza, may you do the call, please?
Chairman William?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Kiefer?
Aye.
Di Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Mrs. Seberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Garza. And too bad we're not meeting in person, but at least we get to meet like this. Better than nothing. So I'm glad to see you all. I wish you all a good evening and look forward to seeing you all on Tuesday. Have a great night, and thank you for all your service and your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.